Because of the wording of the agenda for the last meeting where it said discuss, but did not say consider. When you see that in a Brown Act committee, it means that the committee that that organization is not going to take action. It would, so when I read that agenda, I said, oh, fine. I don't need to come to the meeting. I can listen to it. I'll hear all the people talking. It will be an exchange of information. And that was what we were need to expect. So yes, it's unfortunate that all the people who were here are not here now, and perhaps however, I have to tell you that the noticing was completely legal. There's nothing, but just, I, I want you to know everybody that I am not coming from a position of opposition to the pool in principle. I was a sad day. Not too many years after I moved here, when Dirk Winters shut down the pool at the lodge. It was no longer available to the public. People used to go there to swim. Very sad day, and I for one would have loved to have a new cool. And I could, in my eighty-one year old body, exercise it. So I'm not objecting to the idea. And I think many people, when the survey is taken, they say, do you favor the pool in Cambria? And many would say yes, but the real issue is that the devil is in the details. Yeah, I like a pool, but maybe I don't want it in a particular spot where I see certain problems. So what I had hoped to happen, and what I had hoped to see happen, and that's why I chimed in at the last meeting to say, wait, guys, you don't want to take a vote yet, is, is an exchange of information where all, all of the commissioners and with, and the five commissioners and the one alternate could ask all of their questions and have those questions answered. And that didn't happen. There were questions and they were answered, but there was such a push to get this thing passed that many of, I felt that many of the commissioners didn't have a full chance to explore with the supporters to explore all the incidentals. And furthermore, and even more importantly, they had no opportunity to discuss it in penetrating detail amongst themselves prior to giving a recommendation to the board. Now, just as a former board member, I can tell you that, and I you can't say any things, but if I were on the board now and this was coming, I would be watching this meeting. Or I would be watching to see, to try to get some understanding of the issue before it ever came in front of us. So yet we don't want to cut this process short. It needs to go on. These questions need to be answered, and they need to be answered in this forum. And, and this is for the benefit of the Cambrians for Aquatics, because for example, if, if let's say Ray, is there time going on this before you tell me if I run off too long, but if Ray brings a proposal, very interesting. And he's going to bring it to the board. He brings it to the R and I committee first, and that's a dry word that allows questions to arise that, that Ray can then anticipate, so he will be able to anticipate those. So by the same token, this should be looked at as a guideline for Cambrians for Aquatics. Where you have a properly noticed meeting, there's plenty of information, and there's lots of information being exchanged so that Cambrians for Aquatics can adjust their proposal and, and meet some of the objections before it ever goes to the board. That the rush to get to the board may not lead to where you want to be. That's all I want. Now, I have some questions and then I'll shut up. Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know I'm kind of. You can respond. Let me finish first. I mean, I have some questions for you.
Well, my, my, my.
I don't know. Hold on. We're, we're, I don't think we can debate. Yeah, we're in public discussion. So I mean, public comment. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna discuss. All right.
I have questions.
All right, fire away your questions. Well, can't he just ask the question without us answering them?
Yeah, yeah.
This is not asking us, this is asking.
What happens all the time?
Yeah, he's just making arbitrary questions.
I'm just, I'm, I'm no different than Crosby Swartz or anybody else. First of all, I understand the project to be, and I went to the website with that thoroughly. That it's a proposal for a multi-use heated and disposable all-weather ADA pool with building. ADA accessible with locker rooms and bathrooms. And that it's fully funded and managed by the Cambrian for Aquatics. So I believe that's my understanding. And I understand further based upon the last meeting that the Cambrians for Aquatics are looking for an acre of land in the, on the East Ranch. That, that's my understanding. So I raise questions. First of all, who owns the facility afterwards though? How much is it actually going to be to cost to operate it? That is to say, maintenance, administration, supervision, lifeguards, topping off the pool, the front evaporation. Those kinds of things. Issues about water usage. We, we, I understand you're anticipating using an allocation that the county is presently using, using there for their pool, but that's not the issue. What in terms of ongoing running, the pool has to be topped off periodically. What about that? Non-potable water can be used for toilets, but you need potable for hand washing and showers and drinking. So what is the anticipated water usage for this new facility? In addition, and this is part of it, how much will actually be charged to use it? The, the website says it will be a moderate fee. Well, moderate depends on who you are and how much money you have. So that's, that's a real issue. So the cost to the community to use the pool was important. And then what happens if the maintenance costs exceed what can be obtained from a reasonable charge? Will eventually this pool fall into disuse because it is no longer supported? And will the district then be faced with demolishing the body? So those kinds of questions, which are the concrete questions, need to be answered, and they need to be answered here before you ever get to the board. That is my.
Thank you. All right. There's a couple more questions online. Go ahead. Or stay, Crosby and Laura Swartz, go ahead.
This is Practical Laura speaking this morning. Good morning, everybody. Uh, yeah, John just brought up the question, uh, but I've been listening to a number of the meetings, and so far I haven't heard the word water. You know, verbalized at all, and this is a real concern, uh, as we all know. The thing is, it's not only the cost of filling the pool, topping off the pool, it's washing the towels, it's the bathrooms, it's the showers. And since we do have a water problem, uh, other people who want to build or whatever are probably going to be a little bit upset if we put in a pool. So anyhow, the question to everybody should be on the top of the list is water. Please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alita Francis.
Good morning, Alita Francis. Um, thank you all for all your efforts. Um, um, about the pool, I, I agree that I don't think there's enough information to flush it down the toilet, so to speak, um, the project. I think the other, the other thing is that uh, we, um, the last, and I'm a new kid on the block, so forgive me if, if I'm saying dumb things or asking dumb questions. The last formal published, I guess, plan of that park facility that's actually on the website is dated back to two thousand nine. It was done by an architectural designer, a landscape architect. Just, uh, uh, and it's clearly there's a lot more going on now, a lot more, uh, there's the disc golf, there's skate park, there's a pool possibility. I think I think I personally would like to see a more holistic approach rather than all these little projects scrapping in for a space that have a more holistic approach that involves a complete budget on building these items and maintaining these items. And yes, where is that money going to come from specifically and how those things can get ma- maintained long haul? There was a skate park in Cambria one time. I think, my understanding is it fell into disrepair, which means there wasn't funding to take care of it. So are we going to build another skate park and have it fall into disrepair? Uh, you know, these are the types of things I'm concerned about. I'm also concerned about just, uh, scrapping in projects and not having a bigger overall plan of the, of the whole place so that you can figure out the best way to accommodate all the different elements. I think these elements are lovely and fantastic, and these are great ideas, but I just hate to see them kind of just get collaged in uh, without a bigger picture plan, an updated plan. That is all.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the public? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move into discussion and consideration. We, we're gonna, we'll all include you in the discussion, but we've already done public comment.
I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. I forgot one other thing. I'm so sorry. Um.
All right, go ahead. Did you?
Somebody keeps muting me. Uh, I'm sorry. One more quick thing. I, I did a lot of stuff in LA with a, uh, a neighborhood council, and I was the creator of our survey system. And I think it's imperative that I, I understand that some survey work was done, some sort of grassroots stuff, but I think you know, I spoke to the manager and it wouldn't be hard for him to throw something in the bill and do a you know, every, every house, every property survey to determine, to get the entire community to have a say in which elements they're interested in, and also just get them more involved in the, in the decision-making process because my understanding is that when you serve on a committee like this, you're serving the general public, and the only way to get their feedback is to ask for their, you know, ask, ask them with a survey that's mailed to every house, and it's not that hard to do. I did many of them in a thirteen thousand population community in LA. And it's really worthwhile, and you'll get a lot. You'll get better buy-in, you'll get better engagement, and you'll avoid potential lawsuits later. So that's, that's my two cents on a survey. Thank you. That's it.
All right, we're going to move into the discussion now and consideration for the CCSD directors regarding entering into a memorandum memorandum of understanding with Cambria for Aquatics and for a land allotment and a pool at the East Ranch. I will say that when I voted in the last meeting, I by no means thought that I was voting for an MOU. That is not what I voted for. What I voted for was an idea in my mind. Maybe wrong, maybe not swans words, but that's what the three of us, I would vote for. I like the idea of a pool on the East Ranch. That's about as far as I'm gonna go. Does anybody else want to say anything? John?
Well, I incorrectly voted. And that was my understanding as well. As a, as a commission and today as serving as a voting member, if I if I'm going to vote in favor of something and, and that goes to the Board of Directors for CCSD, I want to be able to explain and defend what the majority of the commissioners voted for. If, if the recommendation goes to the CCSD board to enter into an MOU with Cambrians for Aquatics, I need to have as much information as I ha- I can have to feel comfortable that I can explain and defend that because this commission would have voted in favor of it. I don't have that information. I don't know. I don't know the implications. I don't know the legal status of Cambrians for Aquatics in relationship to an official MOU with a governmental agency. I don't know the implications for, um, promoting, uh, or advocating for a pool on the East Ranch in relationship to the easement, in relationship to the ranch management plan, in relationship to the current I R. I don't know the implications uh, down the road for possibly charging fees to use the pool. That's in violation of my understanding of the easement. I, I, I do not have enough information to say I would vote for a motion that called for an MOU because I couldn't go before the board and explain why I voted for that and what I was voting for.
Jim? I move that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors, or to the CCSD board that they that we support as a commission the, uh, idea of having a pool on the East Ranch. Be period. And we can discuss it if I get a second.
I'll second that because I'd love to discuss it.
Okay, the discussion is.
And so, okay, let me, hold on. Can, can this commission vote for an idea? Just an idea, a, a recommendation, just, it's our opinion?
Let's, let's hear from, let's hear from counsel real quick.
Yeah.
This is not, this is what now looks on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
Good morning, Karen, Nathan, and Commissioners. Technically, that's not really within the framework of the item that's on the regular business.
Mr. Carmel, can this commission vote for an idea?
If it was agendized that way, yes, you could.
Okay. Yeah, now gotcha. It's a recommendation. Counsel, it's a recommendation that we're supposed to give, that we can give? Is that correct or not? We're discussing and considering a recommendation.
Right, but it says recommendation to the directors into entering into a memorandum of understanding.
Yeah. I'm, I'm still going to discuss the, uh, my, my motion, uh, in that you have to start someplace. You can't, after all the discussion and all the presentations, it's clear they have to start someplace. Yes, we don't know. It turns out that it's true, I, that I didn't think about. Is that you can't charge for anything while on, according to the easement. So you can't charge to go in to uh, go to a ball game or a soccer game. So I would think that that restriction will also apply to the pool. So that should be part of it. But you have to start someplace. You have to say, okay, this is where it is. The, the board obviously is going to, I hope is going to discuss this. I can't move to that you do though, but the recommendation very clearly among the among all of the members except for one was to, was to actually do that. It was actually to have suggest the board enter a memorandum of understanding with the pool. That, that was the motion, and I think that was.
That's not what John and I understood.
Understood maybe, but that was the motion. Was it not, Mr. Carmel?
That, that was, that was the motion.
That was the motion.
With an MOU in it?
Yes.
All right.
Uh, so if you, if you don't want to stand by the, uh, the vote that you made in the in the past, maybe then I think that reconsideration because of the Brown Act is approved and.
So our only option here then is to accept, is to, uh, make a motion on this particular agenda item.
Yes.
So it's the MOU or nothing.
Okay.
Is that correct? Mr. Carmel, is that correct?
That is correct. Your, your discussion can go far beyond that. It can be broader than that, but in terms of the action item, it's limited to the MOU.
Okay, and then, and then I can, I can also tell you that the, the board is still interested in hearing from a presentation from Cambria for Aquatics, which we're targeting for September twenty-second. At that time, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, at that time, the board can direct them to come back to PROS. And we can have a different agenda item if you would like to expand upon a different recommendation than the one that was made last meeting. Correct him?
That's correct.
Sure.
Discussion, can we, can we involve discussion?
Why not? Because I love Tony and I like the discussion. Go ahead.
Isn't this all, um, out of bounds because of the easement and the funds that you, they want to charge for actually accessing the pool? Because that negates everything. And so there's nothing to discuss. They can't do that. So their proposal has no legs. Because if, if, if the easement says you cannot charge, that's it. Because their whole basis is to construct it and pay for it with fees for people using it. It's not going to be a free pool. I'm, I'm sorry. It just kills it.
John? So that reinforces my point. My point about my interpretation of the easement, I conceivably could be proved wrong, but I don't have that information. I cannot vote today for to recommend to the Board of Directors, uh, establishing a memorandum of understanding between two entities when I could not define it, explain it, or defend it. So I, I, I can't, I can't.
So I support your opinion, and I think that, uh, if the, um, Cambrians for Aquatics have an opportunity to give a more detailed presentation to the board and come back to the commission, I, I think is an appropriate, uh, area, and I would throw on my motion.
All right. Yeah, so they have a, they have a presentation in front of the board.
That we have one that we're planning.
And how did that get on the agenda?
We do that in agenda review.
So the agenda to Karen and Tom, put that, place that on the agenda.
Spoke about it, um, last week, and, um, we're going to give an opportunity for the disc golf presentation on the fourteenth, and our plan was to give opportunity for Cambria for Aquatics for June twenty-first. I think that's great. Yeah.
Do, well, the, the skate, the frisbee people had to jump through a lot of hoops. And they've got a big, thick presentation of stuff to show, documented stuff. I don't feel like the pool people have that. We don't even have paper on the pool. Well, uh,
Can I now say something?
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
So the request to, to enter into or to, to develop an MOU to work with, it was not it, we did not say you're, we're asking you to, to sign anything or, or agree on anything now. The idea of which the county recommended that we take as our next step. So, you know, we're listening to different bodies and different pieces of advice. But we did not expect that we were going to, you were voting on the MOU. We, 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 the way I saw it, when we, you would begin to talk about what the questions were and give us a chance to give the board and the community publicly the answers. Uh, and that's part of the MOU process, and it's the way we've seen, we saw it uh, with other recent developments on mainstream. So, I mean, to me, it, it, we, we, we would not, you, you know me and you know, and we're not the kind of people who just think of some idea in the shower and decide we're going to just push it. We've been working on this for years and we have the answers. But we have not had a forum to answer the questions, and we will soon have that forum. That I just want to be sure in the annals of history that everyone understands that the request by Cambrians for products was to begin the process toward an MOU. It was, it wasn't worded exactly that way, but that's, that's obviously what anybody going to an elected body would want. We're not asking, we would not have asked for an MOU signature within days or even weeks. We wanted the process to begin. And, uh, I don't see a problem with the process beginning, especially if this board after, you know, does not yet have the basic answers, then I think Cambrians for Aquatics deserves a chance to discuss with this board the answers because the answers are there. And the interest is there. And you know how many supporters we have. We have over five hundred and fifty people behind us. And they have asked the good questions as well. They're not stupid either. They donated, they put time and energy in. So this is, this is, this is a bit of a movement. But I, I really want you to know personally that I would never expect an elected body or an appointed body to just write an MOU without going through a, a long and thoughtful process.
Thank you. John?
Well, the, the Board of Directors will do what it does, with the information as and, and, but this body recommends to the board. And if this body were to have the capacity or authority to recommend, uh, support in general for a pool, I'd vote yes. This is, this was Steve's point, but here we're asked to recommend to the Board of Directors a memorandum of, of that they, that they enter into a memorandum of understanding between a governmental entity, and I'm not sure of the status of the other and how that how that relates to a formal MOU. But I can't, I can't support that here. Maybe I would support it after you present to the board because I haven't heard, I can't explain what that means. And I, I won't vote for something that I can't explain as a member of this committee, commission today. Um, something that I'm going to recommend.
I think the motion's been withdrawn.
Yeah, it looks like we don't have a motion on the floor. And I, I've got more public comment from the audience.
Uh, Tim, just to clarify, I have two board members that are on Zoom. One of them with their hands up. Can they speak? Or is that an issue?
Well, te- technically, under the committee, the standing committee rules, they would not be able to speak. I don't think there's a parallel rule uh, with regard to the PROS Commission. Uh, based on that, I think they can. I, I mean, I think the policy was intended to apply to everything, but it's not in writing within the bylaws and guidelines of PROS.
Okay, so Shannon?
Um, I'm just wondering if it is appropriate for this project to, um, not be presented in PROS and only be presented to the CCSD board. It just seems like that it should be presented to PROS first and then to the CCSD board. Um, so I'm a little confused, even with the vote that currently happened, a little confused how the project has jumped to directly to the CCSD board, um, when other projects have worked very hard going through PROS and moved through the process properly. So I'm, I am really hoping that we see this project with PROS and that we have the ability to recommend it for the agenda on the CCSD board.
Thank you.
Can I correct something I said? I didn't realize we were talking about another PROS board member. Another PROS board member can speak, but only as a member of the public.
Speaking as a member of the public.
Yeah, another one, Matt? Somebody else?
Another, Mrs. Dickinson.
Mrs. Dickinson.
Yes, thank you, Steve. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Um, I think this has been prolonged unnecessarily. It, Mr. Carmel has made it quite clear as anybody reading the agenda that this was a vote on an MOU. It was nothing else, and no matter what, um, Mr. Baringer may try to influence his uh, fellow commissioners. He did this ten and a half years ago, and look what happened. Look where we are. For anyone to listen to Mr. Baringer at this point, at this juncture, makes absolutely no sense. I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Calderwood's comments, with Commissioner John's, uh, comments. And to do anything other than to vote no makes absolutely no sense, and it's going to create even more issues with the public, but even more issues going further a, afield beyond where you are today. This is a CCSD item, and it has to come before the CCSD board and for the public at large. To do anything other than that would be a huge error on your part, in my, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Don?
I think a way out of this situation would be, and it would be, uh, within the Brown Act to do so, would be to set the table. This
Yes.
will do to some date certain. I, well, that was all I thought of, and now it will get you to the point where you can deal with some of these other objections, and it will give Cambria for Aquatics a chance to tighten up your game and present and come with a really convincing argument.
I, I like the comment, but, uh, I, I don't, I, I think the, uh, table it to a date certain. Uh, first of all, now all of its demands that it comes back to here after the presentation, I think that we should uh, table this until we get feedback from the Board of Directors. Not to a date certain. And I can, I think that's put in Brown Act, I'm sure. To be, to be done. That, that's my, I, I move that we table this until we get feedback from the board.
Can we make it say direction from the board instead of feedback?
Sure. All right. In, in, direction, direction. I like that.
I, I would second that.
Or you could take a vote. Oh, um, I don't know.
Yeah, but to take the votes, somebody would have to move this right here, right? And I'm not going to make that motion. Nobody here is, so I don't think that's happened. So it looks like we're gonna table this. Cheryl, you got something?
Yeah, just withdraw it. Just withdraw it because we're going to become a standing committee, and then you can bring it back to a standing committee. So I go ahead and withdraw this and leave it alone and do.
Same difference?
I get to a standing committee.
Might be.
That's my thought.
That being. Well, and I'd make a motion to withdraw this agenda item. Is that how you do it?
Yes.
All right. No, go ahead, Tim.
Alright, no, go ahead, Tim.
You don't, you don't need to take that motion. I mean, if you take no action, that's effectively what you're doing.
Okay, I agree, we take no action.
Take no action.
No, I second that, and that's against me, against my, my, my ethic, though. I like to move things forward.
John, you comfortable with that?
Sure.
Alright, yeah, so boom, that looks like it's over.
I move to adjourn.
Alright, future agenda items? None recommend, unrecommended right now. We'll see what the commission plays out. I have a report to the board on Thursday, correct? Okay, so, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, I'm sorry, my bad.